...in the state of our existence, our culture and our rich heritage we are proud of. Senator Bernie Sanders was one of the 2016 presidential candidates that came to my community and promised to build nation-to-nation relationships with indigenous communities. That is what this country needs: the person who is willing to have the conversations and offer a seat at the table to all people of the human form. This country will only work, will only get better if we work together and actually listen to each other. As a native indigenous woman in Iowa, I am one of roughly 13,000 indigenous peoples in the state of Iowa and one of 3.1 million citizens that call Iowa home. And my voice matters at a seat at the table of our country, just as all races, ethnicities, and genders do, for we are all indigenous from somewhere. And today, I am proud to introduce a senator who actually listens like a leader is supposed to do, a senator that wants to find actual solutions to combat climate change and inequalities in the justice system, a man of integrity, decency, and the might to fight for all of us, my friend and the next President of the United States, Senator Bernie Sanders. And now, I'd like to introduce Morgane Garnier.
Hey, guys, how we doing today? Yes, that's exactly what I want to hear. All right, before we get started, we're gonna do a quick little exercise, okay? I'm gonna say, "Mic check." And y'all are gonna respond, "Mic check." Ready? We need to do that three times, all right. "Mic check."
"Mic check."
"Mic check."
"Mic check."
All right, that is way, way better. Hello, everyone, my name is Morgane Garnier, and I'm a student activist from Grinnell College. I'll be graduating. I'll be graduating this May with a bachelor's degree in political science and a concentration in peace and conflict studies. I'm here today because organizing in Iowa for the past four years has taught me a lot about the issues facing Americans. About a year and a half ago, like many of you, I watched a seemingly endless stream of mass shootings fill social media and news outlets. Since Sandy Hook in 2012, 1,997 mass shootings have rocked communities like Malcolm all over this country. As someone who truly believes that if the people stand up for what they believe in, change can and will happen, I joined a group of incredible people in the Grinnell community to hold a campaign called 26 Days of Action Against Gun Violence. This movement started in Grinnell because right off of I-80, less than four miles from where I live, there lies a massive production facility called Brownells. If you hadn't heard of it, Brownells is one of the largest gun parts manufacturers in the world, not Iowa, the world. At the time, the CEO of this corporation also just so happened to be the president of the NRA and my fellow neighbor Pete Brownell. In collaboration with Sandy Hook-based organizations like Newtown and Moms Demand Action Against Gun Violence, we held 26 days of church services, documentary screenings, panels, marches, vigils, and so many other events to challenge Pete Brownell, our neighbor, to stand up for sensible gun regulation and an end to the violent, polarizing, and outright false rhetoric propagandized by the NRA. Though Mr. Brownell has still not had the courage to face us, he has since stepped down as president of the NRA. But I stand here before you today, not discouraged. I have so much hope. Our world is on the precipice of great change. All over this world, people are saying enough is enough. Enough is enough of political inaction on gun violence. Enough is enough of semi-automatic weapons showing up in our schools, movie theaters, clubs, churches, mosques, cafes, and way too many other places. Enough is enough of politicians choosing NRA money over our lives. It ain't right. As the March for Our Lives movement says, "We don't have to die this way, but we sure as hell do not have to live this way." So now, it's up for us to decide: are we gonna accept the terms of the establishment or are we ready to fight for radical change? I'm here today because I'm ready to fight for radical change, and since 2016, I've been ready to fight for it with Bernie Sanders. There is no other candidate in recent history that has demonstrated they are as willing and as capable of standing up to the NRA, to Wall Street, Big Pharma, Big Ag, and the elite class in America as Bernie. His long-straining track record of fighting for what is right, no matter how unpopular his position may be, is a quality that holds my utmost respect and faith. And now, I'd like to introduce to you all Jason Ratabush.
Good afternoon. I'm Jason Ratabush, your Paoche County Supervisor. I would like to thank the voters for electing me. I enjoy serving the people of Paoche County. I would like to start off by telling a story of a young woman from Brooklyn, my hometown. Her family came here on a farm-hand work program. She went to BGM K-12, graduated, went to community college, got her degree, then she went to serve in the U.S. Coast Guard, served and become a citizen. She was told she couldn't. This administration, the first month of power, did away with it. Her recruiter didn't even know. So she renewed her visa, now she's at the UNI getting her bachelor's degree. She loves this country, this is the only country she knows. She just wants a path to citizenship. They're known as DACA Dreamers. To me, she's Abby, my oldest, my oldest son's girlfriend. I'm fighting for her, but it'll take us. I've followed Bernie Sanders for over 10 years. We have a lot in common. He believes in a path to citizenship, clean air, clean water, affordable healthcare for all, affordable college for all, a living wage for all, criminal reform, criminal justice reform, campaign reform, and fight corporate greed, and many other issues, but it'll take us to make a difference. One other thing we got in common: I'm from Brooklyn, he's from Brooklyn. Brooklyn, New York, Brooklyn, Iowa, same thing. I, Jason Ratabush, Paoche County Supervisor, endorse Bernie Sanders for President of the United States. Thank you.
Work. There we go. Wow, it's such a pleasure to be here with you. Shout out to the mayor, to the sheriff, and to all the citizens of this great city, and for all of you to be here this afternoon to have a conversation with the senator. To my sisters and brothers who have spoken before me, who have already laid out why it is so important that we make sure that Senator Bernie Sanders is elected the next president of these United States of America, only all that we love is on the line, that's all. That's it, nothing big. So whether you're here for the environment, or you're here for criminal justice reform, women's rights, you name it, whatever brings us to this space, we are all interconnected. And what happens in Malcolm happens in Ames, what happens in Ames happens in Cleveland, Ohio, what happens in Cleveland happens in Chicago, what happens in Chicago happens in New York, what happens in New York happens in LA. We are all interconnected. And the beautiful thing about the type of race that Senator Sanders is running is that he understands that, and he is using this platform to bring millions and millions of people together. He's always said it, but particularly in 2016, he started this whole mantra about not me, it's us, and that the types of changes that we are seeking comes from each and every one of us. Malcolm, you know, titles are good. They get your phone calls returned, they get you in the room. We got folks in this country with some pretty fancy titles, but far too often, when people get in the room, they forget why they're there. They forget that they're there to stand up and serve the everyday people from all walks of life in this country. See, titles are good, but purpose is better. And we all can be purpose-driven, we don't have to have a fancy title to live out our purpose, and each and every one of us has an obligation to make this world a better place. That is why we are here, that is one of the reasons why the senator is running. So I bring you word by two of my favorite people in history, I have many, I won't name them all, being the historian that I am, pull my notes out my purse. If you're from the South, you know the Southern Ladies Bank and Trust, that's what my grandmother used to keep her goodies, right here, in the, in the bank, in the bank. Some of my sisters understand that. So one of them is Congresswoman Barbara Jordan. She said, "What the people want is very simple, they want an America as good as its promise." That's why you're assembled here today, that's what you want, that's what you're working for, that's what you're fighting for, that's what you're hoping for, that's what you're dreaming for. What we have in Senator Bernie Sanders is, in the words of Dr. Cornel West, "A long-distance runner for justice." You see, he understands from a lived experience, he's not new to this. Hashtag millennials, all the way woke. Senator Sanders is very much awake. And it is, it comes from a deep place. For many of the millennials in this room, at your very ages, he was at the University of Chicago, standing up a member of corps, leading corps on that campus, and standing up against racial inequality, discrimination in housing at that university and in that city. Show enough woke. He understands from a lived experience, having a father who came to this country at the age of 17 years old as an immigrant, escaping the Holocaust. So he understands what it means for people to be seeking a better life, whether you are foreign-born or born right here on this land. What we have in common is our desire, our drive, our determination to live a good life. Hashtag woke. His lived experience, having a mother and a father, and the senator will say, "Listen, they never miss a meal." There are some people in this country who do miss meals. But what he did understand from coming from a working-class family is the tension that poverty brings upon your life. It is hard to be poor. And the senator is one of the rare politicians who, he doesn't just talk about the middle class, he talks about the poor, the working poor in this country. Now, I don't know about you, I don't know anybody that says that when they grow up, they want to be poor. Everybody has a dream, everybody has an aspiration, but when you have a system that is absolutely rigged socially, politically, economically, environmentally, that bends to the wheel of the 1%, the people who have the most connections and the most money, meanwhile, they leave the rest of us behind, we need a champion that can't be bought off, and that champion is Senator Bernie Sanders. He won't sell you out. Hashtag won't. He won't sell you out. His mother died at a very young age, she was 46 years old, and that's very young to die. And one of her goals, one of her wishes, one of her dreams, because they grew up in Brooklyn in rent-controlled housing, she wanted to own her own home. That is very foundational to the American dream, but she never lived to realize that. I'm sharing these stories because we have in him a leader that feels deep, that thinks deep, that has a vision that is rooted in his lived experience. The reason why he cares about people who don't have as much is because he's been there. He is a first-generation college graduate, he knows what that means. And so, he is willing, and has always been willing, to challenge a system that does not want to answer or even hear the cries of people who do not have as much. He has the heart-soul agreement that we need to transform this nation. I want to end with Brother Teddy Roosevelt, President Teddy Roosevelt, let me make it He says, "This country will not be a good place for any of us to live in unless we make it a good place for all of us to live in." That is it. So what the people want is very simple, they want an America as good as its promise. We want clean food, clean air, clean water. We want to know that when we work hard, that one job should be enough: the Marriott workers. This place cannot be a good place for any of us to live in unless it's a good place for all of us to live in. That is what President Teddy Roosevelt said. It is just as true today. You merge those two together, and you have, within those two quotes, the mission, the mandate of Senator Bernie Sanders. Not me, us, standing up for the people, whether it's popular or not, will not sell you out because, at the end of the day, when he wins this race, see, he don't have to answer the big corporate donors or big-time donors, the only folks he has to answer to is you, and you, and you, and you, truly a man of the people. The Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. in one of his quotes talked about the measure of a man, and I'll add the measure of woman in there, too, to spice it up for the 21st century, but the measure of a man is not where he stands in times of comfort and convenience, but it is where they stand in times of controversy. What we have in Senator Sanders is a champion who's been on the picket line with the workers, Verizon, Marriott. What we have in Senator Sanders is someone who marched on Mississippi with Brother Danny Glover to help UAW, to help Nissan workers unionize. What we have in Senator Bernie Sanders is a man who is ahead of his time, he sets the pace. So never doubt that when conscious-minded people get together, what we cannot accomplish together, or in the words of President Nelson Mandela, "It always seems impossible until it is done." We are the doers, and it can be done if we are willing to put our conscious minds together collectively to have transcendence, and that's what we have in Senator Bernie Sanders. So if you can, brothers and sisters, for me, on this fine Sunday afternoon in Malcolm, Iowa, I need you to participate, because I'm trying to feel this thing, I'm feeling this thing real deep right now, can you tell? And if you could just do something for me, just raise one hand for yourself and another hand for somebody else. And with these hands, we will have Medicare for all, can I get a "uh"? With these hands, we will have college for all, can a sister get a "uh"? And with these hands, women will finally make their whole damn dollar, can I get a "uh"? With these hands, we will save Mother Earth, can a sister get a "uh"? And with these hands, we will stand boldly together to have transcendence in this country so that the rainbow mosaic of humanity can have the opportunity to live a good life. And with these hands, one for yourself and one for somebody else now, with these hands, we will elect Senator Bernie Sanders as the next president of these United States of
Thank you. Now, now, that is a tough act, a tough act to follow, I'll tell you that. Let me thank Danielle Wannaty, and let me thank Morgane Garnier and Jason Ratabush for their remarks, and let me thank Nina Turner, who has, over the last several years, been running all over this country, getting people involved in the political process and getting people standing up for justice. So Nina, thank you very much for what you do. I am told, I don't know if it's 100% accurate, but I have been told that I am the first candidate for president ever to come to Malcolm, Iowa. And your mayor told me that there are about 287 people in the town, and I think we got most of them here this afternoon. So thank you very much. And let me tell you, some of you may know, that my state of Vermont, like Iowa, is a very, very rural state. In fact, most of our people live in towns of less than 1,000, and I spent a couple of years in a town just about the size of Malcolm, a couple of hundred people, and it was a remarkable experience. And one of the concerns that I have, and I know you have, is that not just in Iowa or in Vermont, but all over this country, rural America is hurting. We're losing family-based agriculture, we're seeing our kids leave the towns that they grew up in because there are no decent jobs, we're seeing downtowns getting boarded up, we're seeing schools closing or consolidated, and this is an issue that we have got to work hard on, because I believe from the bottom of my heart that a small town is a great place to live in, and we should not be embarrassed about that. You know, it is, it is something, you know, I'll tell you, I was, some years ago, I went to New York City, left Vermont, went to New York City just for a visit, and I'm walking down the street, and I would say hello to people, and they would look at me, shocked, like I was assaulting them, you know? And that's true, you know, in Vermont, people are dry, I don't know if it's true in Iowa, you got one car going this way, one car going that way, people stop and they chat for a few minutes. Do you do that here as well?
Yeah, we do it here, too.
And, you know, it means something to live in a town where everybody knows everybody else. But we're not gonna succeed in protecting rural America unless we have decent jobs, unless we protect our family farmers, unless we have good education for our kids, unless we have good healthcare, unless we have good internet services and cellphone services. And that's an issue we're gonna be talking about a whole lot in this campaign. It is not good that 60% of rural counties in this country are depopulating, getting smaller. So we're gonna do everything we can, and we look forward to your ideas about how we rebuild rural America, and once again, make it a prosperous part of the country where people are so proud to live in. Let me just talk a little bit about the campaign that we are waging. My vision for America is very, very different than Donald Trump's, and I want to say, I don't know the politics of this particular area of Iowa, but I do know that Trump won Iowa by a pretty good vote. And what I want to say to the people of Iowa and the people of Malcolm is, I can understand, truly, why people did vote for Donald Trump. He talked about creating jobs for everybody, remember that? Said, "If you elect me president, I'm gonna create jobs, I'm gonna create healthcare for everybody," that's what he said. He said that he was a different type of Republican, that he was not gonna cut Medicare or Medicaid. He said that he was gonna bring forth tax reform that would not benefit the wealthy but would benefit working families and the middle class. And what I simply want to say is that on all of those issues and many others, Trump was not telling the truth. The fact is, he has not brought forth a plan to provide healthcare to everybody, quite the contrary. The plan that he supported would have thrown 32 million people off of the health insurance they have, and that is just a terrible thing. I just, you know, we got a dysfunctional healthcare system to begin with, and what happens to people who are thrown off the healthcare that they currently have, people who are struggling with cancer, heart disease, who just need to go to the doctor. Trump said that he would not cut Medicare and Medicaid, all of you should know, the ranking member of the Budget Committee, so I know a little bit about it. Trump's budget brought forth a trillion and a half, trillion and a half-dollar cut to Medicaid over a 10-year period. You know what that means? That means not only taking away healthcare coverage for kids and for lower-income people, it means devastating nursing homes in America. Because if you have a mom or a dad who's dealing with Alzheimer's, who is very sick as a nursing home, who do you think is paying that bill out? By and large, it is Medicaid. You make a trillion and a half-dollar cut to that program, it will decimate people's ability to have nursing home care for their loved ones. Trump said he would not cut Medicare, while his budget calls for an $850 billion cut to Medicare. Trump said his tax proposals would not be benefiting the wealthy, 83% of the tax breaks are going to the top 1%. So he simply did not tell the people the truth. And whatever you may also say about Donald Trump, and we agree with him, or you don't agree with him, I think it is not a healthy thing for this country that we have a president who is a pathological liar, who lies all of the time. Now, I have friends who are conservatives, they are not liars, they believe what they believe, and that's called democracy, but when you have a president who, every single day, says one absurd or dishonest thing after another, that's not really what we need in the highest levels of government. Just give you one example, some of you may notice, may have heard, that just the other day, Donald Trump announced that wind turbines cause cancer. Now, so we were a little bit nervous about coming back to Iowa, you know, you got all these wind turbines all over the place, but, I mean, that's just, where he gets these ideas, God only knows. But, you know, and I would hope that people appreciate, whether you are conservative, whether you're progressive, you know, you need somebody with a little bit of integrity and honesty in, in the White House who tells people the truth. And the other thing that I feel very strongly about Donald Trump, it's not that I just disagree with him on virtually every issue. That's not the real problem here, but I'll tell you what the real problem is, and Nina Turner touched on this, and that is, it is a very tragic day for us to have a president who is trying to win votes by dividing our people up, okay? Now, we can disagree on healthcare, and you can disagree on tax reform, whatever it may be, but the function of the President of the United States, it seems to be an integral part of the job, is to bring our people together, we are one nation. Whether you're black, or whether you're white, or you're Latino, or you're Native American, you're Asian American, whether you're gay, or you're straight, you were born in this country, you're an immigrant, that's what a president does, we bring people together, not divide them up. And I will promise you that our campaign and our administration will be doing exactly the opposite of what Trump is doing. He wants to divide us up, we are going to bring our people together. The principles of our government, and I use the word "our" advisedly, and I'll tell you why in a minute, but the principles of our government are gonna be based around the time-honored belief in justice, justice. That means economic justice, that means social justice, that means racial justice, that means environmental justice. What do I mean, what do I mean by economic justice? And I'm gonna tell you things that you don't see too often on television or read in the papers. Today in America, we have more income and wealth inequality than almost any major country on earth, and it is worse now than it was since the 1920s, okay? Listen to this, you got three wealthy families in America that now own more wealth than the bottom half of American society. It's 160 million people here, three families over there. You have the top 1% now owning more wealth than the bottom 92%. At a time when many families in Iowa and Vermont are working two or three jobs to put food on the table, 49%, almost half of all new income, goes to the top 1%. So what our campaign is about and what our government will be about is creating a government and an economy that works for all of us, not just the 1%. And what we are gonna focus on also is that in the wealthiest country in the history of the world, our kids should not be having a lower standard of living than their parents. Think about that. Huge increases in technology, huge increases in productivity, but unless we turn it around, your generation, young lady, will have a lower standard of living than your parents, and we must not allow that to happen. I've got four kids, seven grandchildren, we do not believe in downward mobility, we believe that we're gonna bring the people of this country up, not down. But it is not only an unfair economy that we have to address, we also have to deal with a corrupt political system. You know, in my state, we have town meetings just like this, all over the state of Vermont. You know, in my state, we have town meetings just like this, all over the state of Vermont. Once a year, people come together just exactly like this. People vote, they argue about how much they wanna spend on the roads and education and so forth. And it's called "one person, one vote" democracy. You gotta vote, and you gotta vote. Where we are right now is you gotta vote, but the Koch Brothers and other billionaires are able to spend hundreds of millions of dollars on an election. I do not believe that billionaires should be able to buy elections in the United States And that is why, together, we're gonna overturn this disastrous Citizens United Supreme Court And it's why we're gonna move to public funding of elections, because I want all Americans, you're conservative, you're moderate, you're progressive, whatever you may be, I want you to be able to run for office without begging wealthy people for campaign contributions. And when we talk about democracy, there's something else that I feel very strongly about, which is going on right now. And that is that you have cowardly Republican governors who are working overtime to suppress the vote. Now, you stop and you think, all right? If you run for office, you run for office, and I've done it many, many times in Vermont, because you believe in something. Here are my ideas, I hope you'll support them, I'm gonna try to convince you to vote for me. Somebody else disagrees with me, they'll make their case. But the idea that you have Republican governors all over this country who are so cowardly that they cannot defend their ideas and that the only way they can win elections is by keeping people from voting who might vote against them. And I say to those cowards, and I say this from the bottom of my heart, if you think you can't win a free and fair election, get out of politics and get a new job. And we have gotta restore that type of culture, we've gotta restore that type of culture. Look, I've run in Vermont, I've lost elections, I've won elections. That's what politics is about. But you run based on your ideas, not gutting the Civil Rights Act or the Voting Rights Act and making it difficult for people of color, for poor people, for young people to participate. I want to take a moment to thank the people of Iowa. And I, I say that because this state is where the political revolution which is sweeping this country began. It began in Iowa in 2015, and I thank you very much. And I'll tell you what I mean by that, tell you what I mean by that. What I mean by that is that when we first came to Iowa in 2015, I dare say that the vast majority of the people had no idea who Bernie Sanders was. We were at 3% in the polls. And maybe most importantly, many of the ideas that we were talking about were labeled by the mainstream media and mainstream politicians as extreme and as radical ideas. You know, four years ago, when I was running through Iowa, we talked about raising the minimum wage to a living wage, remember that? And people said, "Bernie, yeah, you're a nice guy, but frankly, you're a little bit crazy." I mean, how can you dare, the minimum wage, what is it here, eight bucks an hour, something like that? 725? How can you talk about doubling what the minimum wage is in Iowa? That's crazy, can't do it. Well, you know what's going on all over the country right now? Six states have already passed legislation that will raise the minimum wage to 15 bucks And I have talked to too many Iowans who are trying to get by on eight, nine, 10 bucks an hour, and you know what? You can't get by on eight, nine, or 10 bucks an hour. And that is why we are gonna raise the federal minimum wage to 15 dollars an hour. Four years ago, I said that at a time when our infrastructure, that's our roads and our bridges, our wastewater plants, our water system, our rail system, our airports, in many cases are falling about, we can create up to 15 million jobs rebuilding our infrastructure. It is not a radical idea to say that in America, when you turn on the water faucet, you get clean drinking water. Not a radical idea. But people said, "A trillion dollars, my goodness." Well, that is exactly what people today are talking about. Four years ago, at a time when Republicans are trying to cut Social Security, I always do that, talk about water, and the water gets on my mind, then I knock these things When Republicans, I want you to think about this, in Iowa, in Vermont, and all over this country, you got a whole lot of seniors citizens trying to make it on 12, 13,000 dollars a year Social Security. You know that? How do you make it on 12, 13,000 dollars? How do you heat your home? How do you buy the food? How do you buy the medicine you need? And the answer is, you can't do it. And yet despite that, you got Republican leadership in the House and the Senate wanna cut Social Security. So we came up with the idea, we said, "No, we're not gonna cut Social Security, we're not gonna preserve Social Security as it is, we're going to expand Social Security You know, we don't talk about this, we don't talk about this very much, but there are a lot of seniors in this country who are hurting very badly. You got long waiting lists for meals on wheels. These are our parents, these are people who fought in our wars. We have a moral responsibility to make sure that folks who reach the end of their lives can live lives of dignity and security. So we're gonna expand Social Security. Four years ago, I was in a national debate, it was televised, and somebody said, "Senator, what do you think the most important national security issue facing our country?" And we faced many. And I think the question and the thought that I would respond, that's ISIS, it's Al Qaeda, it's some terrorist group. And I said, "No, the most significant and dangerous national security issue we face is climate change." Four years ago, that seemed to be a radical idea. Not anymore, because we have the leading scientists in the world now telling us that if we do not move aggressively to transform our energy system away from fossil fuel and move to energy efficiency and sustainable energy, the harm that will be done to this country and this planet is irreparable, irreparable. So we have a moral responsibility to make sure that the planet we leave, our kids and grandchildren, is a planet that is healthy and habitable. Now, four years ago, before it was fashionable, we talked about a broken criminal justice system. And we said, "Maybe there's something wrong when in the greatest country on earth, we have more people in jail than any other country disproportionately African-American, Latino, and Native American." Four years ago, we talked about a broken immigration system in which 10 million people are undocumented and living in fear. And the fact is that we need to move toward comprehensive immigration reform and a path towards citizenship. Four years ago, we came up with a radical idea, my God, that maybe candidates should run for president and not be dependent on super PACs funded by billionaires. That was a very radical idea. And four years ago, we said, "Maybe there is something wrong in the Democratic primary when you had one candidate, Secretary Clinton, four years ago, getting 500 super delegate votes before the first ballot was cast here in Iowa." Maybe there's something wrong with that idea. So we brought forth many ideas, a lot more than that. And people say, "This is impossible, nobody in America is gonna believe that." Well, a funny thing happened in Iowa in 2015 as we went around the state. We started at 3% in the polls, but on caucus night, we ended up with 50% of the vote. And half, half of the delegates. And that victory in Iowa began the process by which we ended up winning 22 states, getting over 13 million votes, over 1,700 votes at the Democratic National Convention. And most importantly to me, we ended up winning more votes from young people than Clinton So what Iowa did four years ago is you said, you know, healthcare for all, living wages, protecting the environment, fighting climate change, these aren't radical ideas, these are exactly the ideas that we need to implement in the United States of America. That is the role that Iowa played, and I thank you very much for what you did. So in 2016, with your help, we began the political revolution, and now in 2019, we're gonna complete what we began. This evening here in Malcolm, I say to the private insurance companies that whether they like it or not, the United States is going to join every other major country on earth and guarantee healthcare to all people as a right, not a privilege. See, the American people, the American people are waking up. And they understand that there's something unjust and not acceptable, that millions of our people have no health insurance, and even those who do have health insurance, in many cases have such high deductibles and copayments, they can't afford to go to the doctor. How many of you have high deductibles and copayments? All right? So it's not even a question of whether you have insurance or not. If you don't have any money and you have an insurance program with high deductibles, you do not go to the doctor when you should. And all over this country, people are scared to death that if they end up in the hospital, or their kid ends up in the hospital, their family may go bankrupt from the outrageous bills they're going to receive. So the people of this country are catching on that healthcare is a human right, whether you're rich, whether you're poor, you have the right to go to a doctor when you need to, you have the right to come out of a hospital without worrying about what's gonna happen financially to your families. And people also understand that there is something very wrong in our dysfunctional system when we are spending twice as much per capita on healthcare as do the people of any other nation. Do you all know that? You know, it's one thing, you know, you wanna buy a cheap car, you buy a cheap car, but you don't expect it to be doing great. We're spending twice as much as any other country, and yet our life expectancy is going down. Our life expectancy is much lower than many other countries. Our healthcare outcomes in terms of infant mortality and many other social indices are worse than other countries. So let me, let me make a very radical proposition to you right now. And that is that I believe the function of a rational healthcare system is to provide healthcare to all people in a cost-effective way, not to make the insurance companies and the drug companies rich. And when we talk about healthcare, we cannot fail to talk about the incredible greed of the pharmaceutical industry. I want you all to know that the pharmaceutical industry charges us the highest prices in the world for the same exact prescription drugs that people are buying all across the planet. Here's a story. Back in 1999, I took a busload of Vermonters up to Montreal, Canada, it was about a 50-mile trip from northern Vermont. And the people on the bus were mostly working-class women who were struggling with breast cancer. Now, we had arranged this whole trip, and we went to a pharmacy in Montreal. Women walked into that pharmacy to get the medicine they needed. One of the drugs was called Tamoxifen, which is a widely prescribed breast cancer drug. They paid, this is back in 1999, they paid one tenth of the price for the same exact medicine they were buying in the United States. And what we see today as a result of that trip, of the members of Congress made that trip, millions of people today are buying medicine from abroad. We should not have to go to Canada or to the UK to buy our medicine. And we are gonna tell the pharmaceutical industry that they're gonna lower their prices by 50%, which is what the rest of the world is paying. We're tired of being ripped off. When we talk about the future of this country, we talk about education. And when we talk about education, we are talking about children from zero to four who deserve quality childcare. What psychologists will tell you, and what I think we all instinctively understand, the most important years of a human being's life are zero to four. That's when we develop intellectually, that's when we develop emotionally. And yet we have throughout this country a childcare system which is absolutely dysfunctional. People cannot afford to send their kids to quality childcare. It is not a radical idea to say we have got to invest in our children, in our working families, and provide quality childcare to every working family in this country. We're gonna do that. It is not a radical idea to say that in a highly competitive global economy, that we wanna have the best educated workforce in the world. Now, 50 or 60 years ago in America, you can get a high school degree, you can go out and get a pretty good job. Well, to a large degree, that world has changed. Technology has changed, the economy has changed. People need higher education if they're gonna make it into the middle class. So I believe two things. Number one, we must make public colleges and universities tuition-free. And number two, we must reduce the outrageous level of student debt in this country. On Thursday, I had some young people in my office who were going to graduate school and they're in education. And one guy told me, he said, "Bernie, I'm getting my master's degree, I'm now teaching school, I will leave school, $180,000 in debt." I don't know on a teacher's salary how he is going to ever pay off that debt. Think about it. Think outside of the box. Clearly, as a nation, we want the best educated population possible, right? That's what we want. Why are we punishing young people for the crime of getting that education? Why are we telling them that they're gonna have to pay off those debts for 10, 20, 30 years? That is not only wrong, it is insane, it is counterproductive, the way you want to run a country. So we're gonna substantially lower student debt in this country, and we're gonna make public colleges and universities tuition-free. Now, people say, my conservative colleagues say, "Well, hey, Bernie's a nice guy, he's giving away this and giving away that, eh? That's great. Hey, Bernie, how you gonna pay for it?" Well, I will tell you how. Donald Trump, in his quote-unquote wisdom, decided to give a trillion and a half dollar tax break over 10 years to the top 1% and to large- to the top 1% and to large private corporations. We are going to rescind the tax break for the rich. Anybody here know how much Amazon, one of the largest corporations in America, very profitable company, owned by the wealthiest guy in America? Anyone know how much they paid in taxes last year?
Zero.
Zero. Well, I think it is time to change that absurd tax system and tell the wealthiest people in this country, who by the way, are doing better today than they have ever done before, tell the large private corporations who are bringing in record-breaking profits that they will start paying their fair share of taxes. Another issue that I wanna touch on is something that we all should be embarrassed about. Is that in America today, we have more people in jail than any other country on earth. You all know that? Okay. And to me, that is not what this country is supposed to be about. We're spending $80 billion a year at the federal, state, and local level, locking up fellow Americans. I think that it is long overdue for us to move toward serious and real criminal justice reform, so that we are investing in our young people in jobs and education rather than building more jails and having more incarceration. All right? And when we talk about criminal justice reform, we are talking about ending private prisons and detention centers in America. We are talking about ending cash bail. Do you know what I mean by that? I must tell you that a couple of years ago, I didn't know that. Today, in America, there are hundreds of thousands of people, right now, this moment, in jail. Do you know why they are in jail? Do you know what their crime is? What was their crime? They're poor. They don't have the money to pay bail. And if you don't have the money to pay bail, you stay in jail. Think about it. The year 2019, we're talking about the equivalent of the debt of prisons that Charles Dickens wrote about 100 years ago. So we're gonna eliminate cash bail. And the other very important issue, it's controversial, but I think we're moving in the right direction. Back in 2016, I talked about ending the so-called war on drugs. Remember that? And what that is about, I want you all to appreciate, that over a period of years, millions of Americans have been arrested for possession of marijuana. And what happens when you get a criminal record? Well, what happens is, a little bit harder maybe to get a job. Sit down with an employer, and the employer says, tell me about yourself. You ever been arrested? Well, yeah, I was, I was arrested. Have a criminal record? Well, maybe we'll find somebody else to do the job. So we have people all over the country who are suffering as a result of that. Now, the good news is that we are seeing, in state after state, movements toward the legalization or decriminalization of marijuana. That's a good thing in my mind. And we're seeing... And we're literally seeing some states and communities expunge the records of people who are arrested for possession of marijuana. So let me conclude my remarks and open it up for your questions and your comments by saying this. This campaign is about bringing the American people together around an agenda that is widely supported, by the way, and that is prepared to take on very powerful special interests. Now, when we talk about our campaign being us, not me, do you know what I mean by that? What do I mean by that? Anyone wanna help me out here? Yes! This I cannot believe.
And get better students. We can also get, I think that maybe like, things will be fair if we work together. Like, maybe if we work together, more families and more people can pay their bills. Things that they can achieve, more people can get out of jail, and people will, can have better lives in America.
This is unbelievable. How old is she?
I'm 10 years old.
Wow. All right, I see, I see a future president from Malcolm, Iowa, right here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sweetheart. All right, look, she said it. What can I tell you? It's a little embarrassing to be, you know, told the truth by a 10-year-old buddy. All right, but here is the point. The point is that it is imperative that we work together. But there's another point that I think very few candidates will tell you. And that is that no candidate for president, not the most honest or well-intentioned. And by the way, there are a number of candidates running for president, Democratic nomination, who are friends of mine. And almost without exception, these are good, honest people. And I will do everything that I can to make sure that this campaign is about a discussion of ideas and not personal attacks. And we all understand that at the end of the day, no matter who wins, I hope it's me. But if it's not, that's the way it is. But we're gonna come together to defeat Donald Trump. But the main point is that no president can in fact do it alone. Why is that? And the answer is that the powers, the power structure of America is such that you have entities like Wall Street, major Wall Street banks. Six banks have assets equivalent to 54% of the GDP of America. They control the flow of trillions of dollars. They have enormous political power as well as economic power. That's exactly right. That's exactly what we're gonna do. We're talking about the insurance companies and the drug companies that make zillions of dollars in profit every single year. They will spend hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars to protect their profits. You're talking about the fossil fuel industry, who lie to us every single day about the dangers of climate change. And whether we destroy the planet or not, what is more important to them is their profits. Prison industrial complex, the same thing. So the point that I am making, and that young 10-year-old made as well, is that the only way we can transform this country is when millions of people come together, stand together, and have the courage to take on these incredibly powerful special interests who have unlimited sums of money. Now, at the end of the day, the 1% is very, very powerful. And they have billions of dollars at their disposal. But 1% is 1%. We are the 99%. So they may have the money, but we have the people. And if we do not allow Trump to divide us up by the color of our skin, or where we were born, or our religion, or our gender, our sexual orientation, if we stand together and keep our eyes on the prize about the kind of country we want to create, if we do that, there is nothing that we cannot accomplish. Malcolm, thanks very much for being here today. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, questions or comments? Yes, ma'am, right there. Yes. Yes, just tell us your name, please. We'll get you a mic.
Hi, my name is Naomi. I'm a member of Iowa Student Action and a student over at Grinnell College. I come from a low-income family, and the only reason I'm able to attend that school is because I'm on a full-ride scholarship. And most students like me, including here in Iowa, aren't that lucky. Recently, here in Iowa, they've passed a multi-year tuition model that's gonna be...
I'm sorry, they passed a multi-year?
A multi-year tuition model that's gonna be raising tuition at public universities by 5% every single year for the next five years. And so I really appreciate the work that you've done to like, stand against exclusionary models like this and uplift a vision for free college. But I do wanna clarify that this vision for free college is working for the people who need it most. So my question is, does your vision for free college include formerly incarcerated and undocumented students? And does it include living stipends so disadvantaged students aren't struggling for food and housing?
Good. The answer's yes. I mean, we're... It's... Excellent question. And I gotta tell you, I am also from a first-generation college student. So this is what we're trying to do. We haven't laid out all of the details, but number one, make public colleges and universities tuition-free. But I think your point is, that may not be good enough. And you know what astounds me? I wanna tell you two things that I've learned in the last couple of years. Should've known it, but I learned that I was in California at a community college. And I met with the president of the college. She said, she was talking, it's a great school. And she said, and we recently opened an emergency food service on campus. I said, what, I don't understand, what are you talking about? Oh, many of our kids who are going to college don't have enough food, and they're hungry. Can you believe that? I mean, really, can you imagine? In the United States of America, young people... Turned out in Vermont, we have the same thing. Okay. Second point is that many young people in college right now are working outrageous hours. Now, how can you be a good student if you're working 30 or 40 hours a week? Cutting into your ability to do your schoolwork. So to answer your question, we're gonna make public colleges and universities tuition-free. We certainly are gonna provide the... If the goal is to make sure you go to college, we gotta make sure you go to college. All right? So we gotta provide other assistance. We're gonna significantly raise Pell Grants as well. Okay? Works, student work programs as well on campus. And we're gonna lower student debt. But the goal is, in one way or another, and it'll take maybe a dozen different measures, I want to see every kid who is in the fifth grade, kids here in Malcolm, and their parents understand that if those kids do well in school, no matter what the income of that family, that kid will get a higher education and not leave school in deep debt. That is the goal. So... So thanks very much for that excellent question. Yes, is it, yes, sir. Okay, grab the mic there, sir, right behind you.
I'm a criminal, criminal defense lawyer in Iowa, and I have given up practicing in federal court because it's become a ritual. The criminal procedure laws, rules really need to be changed in federal court. And secondly, the federal courthouses have become armed camps. And it seems to me it's emblematic that the government is afraid of its own people. And that's just my take.
Okay, thank you. Well, you know, without answering your question specifically, it is so clear that we have a criminal justice system which is profoundly broken. So young people who are caught with marijuana get a criminal record. But if you are a Wall Street CEO who through illegal activity destroyed the economy, resulting in millions of people losing their jobs, their homes, their life savings, you know what happens to you? You get a trillion-dollar bailout. That is not the kind of criminal justice system that we need. And our goal is to keep people out of jail. Our goal is to make sure that when people end up in jail, they have the job training and the education they need. So when they return to society, they can stay out of jail and not end up back there. So there's a lot to be done on criminal justice, and that's one of the major areas I hope to tackle. Okay, other questions? Yes, ma'am.
And I think this'll be our last question, Senator.
I think maybe we've got time for a few more.
Okay.
Unless I'm gonna... We're on our way to Las Vegas. I don't wanna miss the... We're not gambling, I got a speech. All right, I know, I know.
My name is Lexi, and I'm an ACLU Rights For All voter. I know you care like I do about treating immigrants in our country with dignity. Will you commit to ending the use of detainers in our immigration system?
Wait, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the...
Sorry.
I heard the first one.
Will you commit to ending the use of detainers in our immigration system that cause people to be locked up without due process?
Well, I think it goes without saying that in the United States, due process is at the heart of our legal system, isn't it? So yeah, I believe in due process. Okay, question over here, I think. I see a hand. Who's that hand that touched? Right here. Okay, one second, one second. Yes. You came to Malcolm from Alabama. All right, all right. Okay.
Hi, my name is Brian. I'm just wondering what you're gonna do about the obstructionist policies of the Senate right now and trying to get your policies passed.
Well, the first thing that we need is to have a Democratic Senate rather than a Republican Senate. And the second thing we need to do, and I'll give you one example of it right now, and I'm gonna ask you to do it. We've made some real progress in raising that minimum wage. The House, last month, the House Committee on Educational Labor reported out a bill that will raise the minimum wage to 15 bucks an hour. It's gonna go to the full House pretty soon, I think. Not 100% sure. I think it will pass. If it passes in the House, it comes to the Senate. I urge you, in the strongest possible terms, to tell Senator Grassley and Senator Ernst to please support that legislation. And what we need to do all over this country, you wanna make the Congress move? If millions of people stand up and demand that they move, they will move. You can get Grassley and Ernst the support at $15 an hour, minimum wage, if the people in this state make it very clear by the tens of thousands that folks can't make it on 10 or 11 bucks an hour. Now, also, I think we need filibuster reform. Right now, you have a situation where one person can bring the Senate to a halt, and I am very, very supportive of that as well. There are also mechanisms in the Senate called budget... I don't wanna bore you with Senate parliamentary procedures called budget reconciliation bills, where major, major pieces of legislation have been passed by majority vote. And we will certainly utilize those measures. Okay, gentlemen from Alabama. All right. Anybody, oh my God, all right. All right, what you got?
All right, so I know you've expressed support for universal basic income in the past in your interviews, but there's this guy, Andrew Yang, that wants to give everybody $1,000 a month with a VAT tax. And I think to win the Democratic primary, you gotta do that. You gotta give everybody $1,000.
Nah, I got a better idea.
No? You won't do it?
Nope. Sorry you came all the way from Alabama. All right, here's the better idea. Okay. Okay. Here's the better idea, I think. I understand that idea. I have a better idea. And the better idea, I think, is that in a nation in which there is so much work to be done, just think about it. You got an infrastructure which is crumbling. We can put millions of people to work doing that. Transforming our energy system in terms of weatherizing homes all over this country, building a more efficient energy, transportation system, putting more money into wind and solar and other sustainable technologies. We can create millions of jobs doing that. Think about daycare. You want a world-class childcare center? You need well-educated, well-trained, well-paid childcare workers. We need many of them. We need more doctors in rural areas and in urban areas. We need more nurses. We have a dental crisis all over this country. We need to train dentists and get them out there. We need more social workers. You wanna reform our criminal justice system? Well, you're gonna need people to start working with prisoners. You want kids not dropping out of high school? You're gonna need mentors working with them. There is an enormous amount of work to be done. And what we believe in is guaranteeing a job in this country to anybody who is prepared to work. I think that's the better approach. Okay? All right. All right, Malcolm, this is great. I mean, this is, I think, this is... I mean, this is, I think, this is the ninth town we've been to, this is the smallest town, I believe. It's a great turnout. Thank you all very much for being here this afternoon.